I know one. Let's see, should I use the gavel? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for February 5th, 2019. Let me offer the usual reminders so that everyone who will address the board can sign in on the clipboard that's on the table in front of me. And also make sure the microphone's turned on and you're close enough to it and speaking clearly so the folks at home can hear you. By way of announcement, our next meeting after tonight is February 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in this room. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position in substitute for Lynn tonight. That brings us to item two in our agenda, which is the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Kelly, is there any report?
None tonight.
Are there any questions by members of the Board for Staff? Easily done. Next item on our agenda is the Public Works Presentation on our wastewater treatment facility project. So with that, Kyle, come on forward. And I'm gonna switch seats so that I could both watch and maybe jump in and help.
Good evening, Chairman Best, Board Members. When we last appeared before you, we were here for the CIP presentation. And at that point, you became aware of the new costs for the wastewater project upgrade, and we promised you an in-depth presentation. So that's why we're here tonight. For the folks at home, my name is Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for Merrimack. Beside me is Sarita Croce. She's the Assistant Director of Public Works and in charge of the Wastewater Division of Public Works. So as I said, we're here tonight to do kind of an in-depth presentation on the proposed upgrades for the wastewater, wastewater plant that's gonna appear on the warrant in, at the deliberative session in March, and then on the ballot in April. With that, I'll turn the first part of the presentation over to Sarita.
Thank you very much for allowing me to present this information to you. Just to let everyone know, I joined the town of Merrimack almost four years ago, and I am a chemical engineer by degree who spent the bulk of my career working in the wastewater industry. What we'd like to do today is review with you, give you an overview of the current activities at the wastewater treatment plant, a summary of our upgrades that have been done to date, the project goals, the total scope of the project in terms of cost, and Kyle will be discussing funding, and then answer any questions. So the goal of this project, the wastewater treatment plant, actually came online on May 5th, 1970. On May 5th of this year, the plant will be 49 years old, and before we can do any upgrades, we'll be approaching 50 years old. The goal of the project is to replace the existing equipment that is 50 years old. It's also to address safety concerns. Now, if you take a look up at this picture, you'll see highlighted our wastewater treatment plant that's located at 36 Mass Road. Sort of in the middle of the picture on the slide, there's something called preliminary. That's where all the wastewater comes into the plant. Then the wastewater is treated by those three little circular discs that are called primary. So now 50% of our solids that come in are removed in the primary clarifiers that we have. After primary clarification, we go to secondary treatment. And secondary treatment involves the treating of those organics that come into the plant. So we have bugs that complete the treating, and they basically chew up all of these organics. And then following the treatment of the organics, we go to what's called secondary clarification. Now, secondary clarification is where we separate the bugs from the water. The water now goes and is treated by disinfection. We treat it with hypochlorite or bleach to kill the pathogens, and then it's discharged to the Merrimack River. Concurrent with the treatment of the wastewater, we have solids. And I'm not so sure if everybody knows, we actually have a compost facility where we actually make compost, we sell the compost, and we provide the compost for free to Merrimack residents. So the solids are removed in the secondary clarifier, and they're brought back to the bio solids handling facility. And that's where we actually make our compost. So the goal of this project is to take that equipment that's original to the facility, the stuff that's gonna be approaching 50 years old, and replace it. One of the things that happens when you have old equipment is it's very difficult to repair it, primarily because we actually can't find spare parts anymore for most of our equipment. The second goal is to address safety concerns. And these safety concerns are associated with the aging equipment, as well as some of the systems that are in place. And then the third goal is to address code-related deficiencies. So we have both electrical code-related deficiencies, as well as some ADA compliance code-related deficiencies that we'd like to address. As I said earlier, the plant was brought online on May 5th in 1970. The plant actually cost $5 million in 1970 to build. If we were to build, now that plant was a little bit different than what we have today. If we were to build the plant that we have today, it would cost about $60 million. So I'm sure the residents remember that a couple of years ago, we actually did complete an upgrade, and it was on the warrant article, and that was our Phase II wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and that also included some upgrades in the compost facility. As you can see here, we began our upgrades in 1999, and we've been systematically upgrading things in two, in two major categories. One is to enhance our treatment operations, and the second was to replace some of the original equipment to the facility. So what is the overall goal? What we'd like to do is we'd like to continue to effectively and efficiently treat our wastewater, and continue to comply with our requirements under the Clean Water Act. So the plant actually has a permit with EPA. It's called an NPDES permit, and we have permit limits in there. So one of the major goals here is to make sure that we continue to comply with that permit. So before we go any further, I'd like to actually talk to everyone about a problem we have at the wastewater treatment plant. If you listen to the news or various news shows, what you'll, what you'll hear is that there's a problem with something called flushable wipes. And flushable wipes, or so-called flushable wipes, are wipes that are being discharged to our sewer system that aren't degrading or decomposing prior to coming to the wastewater treatment plant. And what ends up happening are these flushable wipes end up clogging everything. They clog our pumps, they clog our pipes, they actually mix with grease, and sometimes you can see pictures, big balls that are taken out of sewer systems that are wipes commingled with grease. And what we'd like to do today is we'd like to have a short demonstration for all of you and the public. And our demonstration is to show you exactly what the problem is. Now imagine for a moment that you flush the toilet, and it takes maybe about an hour to two hours for the water to get from the toilet to our wastewater treatment plant.
If we could have Chairman Best come up and give us a hand with this. I love science. So first, if you could put some equal amount of water in each of the jars here.
How far do you want it?
As much as you'd like. Next, I'll ask you to put some Merrimack Town Hall toilet paper into one of the jars.
Okay. How much of this you want?
That's plenty.
That's a lot, maybe a little bit less.
It won't matter.
All right.
And in the other jar, we're gonna put what's called flushable wipes, quote unquote. Go ahead and shake yours up.
So the shaking mimics a pump and the action of flushing the toilet. So if you take a look at this, and I don't know if our residents at home can see it, but what you'll see is that in the jar that has the toilet paper, it's completely disintegrated, and it's completely decomposed. If you look at the jar with the flushable wipe, you'll see that it looks, it's actually pretty much intact.
Thank you, sir.
So hence, if we pump the toilet paper through our pumps, absolutely no problems. But when the flushable wipes go through our pumps, now imagine for a second, 27,000 residents, you know, maybe 15,000 are flushing these wipes. Imagine a couple of wipes going per person. It can actually become a pretty big issue. And I believe a couple of months ago on WMUR, they actually had a segment on the issues with flushable wipes. And so what we'll do is, at the end of our presentation, we'll actually go back to the jars, because it'll be a little while, and you'll see that the flushable wipe will still be intact. So how do we address flushable wipes? Well, what we have proposed to do is, we've proposed to actually install a new building that is going to be a new screenings building. And in that building, we're gonna have what's called a climber screen that will be used to remove these flushable wipes from the wastewater prior to entering the plant. Over there, you see on the right-hand side, you can actually see some schematics of what the building will look like. Now let's talk for a second about our main pump station. So if you remember the diagram that we showed at the very beginning, there was a little box that said preliminary on it, and that's where all the water goes into. So that is our main pump station, and that pump station is original to the facility. And if you take a look at the pictures that are shown here, it's pretty obvious that it's very old. One of the things that we're proposing to do here is, we're proposing to replace, to replace two almost 50-year-old pumps with four pumps. Two of the pumps will be larger pumps, two of the pumps will be what we call jockey pumps. The jockey pumps will pump at a lower flow, and if we're able to pump at a lower flow, we're gonna, in essence, have electrical savings. We're also going to see electrical savings, because the new pumps that we're gonna be installing will be more efficient. So we're estimating about a $10,000 per year savings from the pump changeout in the main pump station. The next area that I'd like to talk about is, you remember the little circles on the diagram? One was for the primary clarifier, which removes the solids when the water comes into the plant, and the other one was for the secondary clarifier, which removes the solids for the water as it leaves the plant and it goes to disinfection. So the mechanisms in the primary clarifier, two, two of those clarifiers, the mechanisms were replaced as part of the Phase II upgrade. So we still have one clarifier that we have to upgrade. So that's being proposed in this project. For the secondary clarifiers, what we're proposing is to replace the mechanisms in all three clarifiers, because, because they have never been replaced, and it's original to the facility, as well as install something called algae removal system. And the algae removal system is designed, it's basically brushes that will go in the, a trough in the clarifiers, and it'll remove the algae as you go along. So if you have a huge buildup of algae, you could actually have a compliance problem associated with that. So that's why we wanna remove that. What you see here now is our sludge holding tanks. And as I presented this before, this is something that is very, very near and dear to my heart, because we have our guys go into this sludge holding tank, which is about 17 feet deep. And what they do multiple times a year is they go in with shovels, and they shovel out those wipes that come through the plant, and they put them in buckets, and then they bring them up to the top of the tank, and then we dispose of them. There is something called hydrogen sulfide gas, which is a deadly gas, which is inside that tank, so we have to make sure that when they do this, that they're safe and that we're evacuating the airspace. With this upgrade, we'd like to pretty much eliminate the requirement to go into the tank physically and start shoveling out the wipes and other material. So how we're going to do that is by lowering the height of the tank by about four feet, and Kyle has the arrow pointing where the tank level will be. We're also gonna change the hatches on the top of the tank so that we will be able to access all areas of the tank using something that we call a vector truck. So a vector truck is like a huge vacuum on a truck. And then what we'll be able to do is, we'll be able to actually vacuum out all areas of the tank. We might still have to do a confined space entry once in a while, but we're not talking days on end with gentlemen in there shoveling out the material, because the wipes will have already been taken out at our, in our new screenings building. We have a number of upgrades proposed for our headworks building. So our headworks building houses a lot of our piping. It also houses our emergency generator. So if you look at the top of the slide, you'll see two emergency generators that are original to our facility. We are required by law to have emergency generators, because if power goes down, we're required to be able to continue to treat our wastewater. We're proposing to replace those two emergency generators with one new emergency generator. We're also proposing, if you look on the bottom, that is original sludge piping at the plant, which is approaching now 50 years old. We're also proposing to replace that piping with new piping. And one of the things I wanted to talk about, this piping, is that the valves that we have on there are very, very tough to open. So we actually have to have guys get on top of the pipe and take a wrench to physically open them. So we're proposing to make it much simpler, much more easy to open, which will address safety issues. Another thing that we're proposing to do here is ADA compliance. The wastewater treatment plant headworks building is not ADA compliant, so we're proposing to install a lift to allow individuals to enter the building. And one of the last things here, for which I do not have a picture, is we're also proposing to upgrade our laboratory. So our lab currently is what we call a NELAC-certified lab, so it does analysis that's required, and our analysis counts in terms of compliance with our permits. And what we're going to be able to do with this new lab is, we're also gonna be able to do some of the analysis required by our stormwater, with our stormwater requirements. So in addition to the main pump station, we actually have two other pump stations that are original to the town of Merrimack. One is called Thornton's Ferry, the other one is called Sohegan. Both of those pump stations, they're all original infrastructure, and we're proposing to do what we're going to do in the main pump station in Thornton's, at Thornton's Ferry and Sohegan. So we're gonna replace the pumps there with pumps that are on variable-speed drives, and that variable-speed drive will allow us to throttle back the flow. And again, we're going to see probably in the order of about $3,000 a year of electrical savings with the upgrades at this, at these facilities. So we talked about compost at the very beginning. So a part of our operations, we make compost. We actually sell our compost, and last year, we made about $175,000, $180,000 selling our compost. We also provide compost to our residents for free. Now, what happens in the compost facility is, we take the materials, the solids that come off the wastewater treatment operations, and we mix it with sawdust. And then what we do is, we, we put it into the building, and we treat it. We raise the temperature, and the reason to raise the temperature is to actually kill all the pathogens that are in the compost. So as part of the Phase II, we actually did some significant upgrades to the compost facility, but we weren't able to complete all of them. And some of the things that we weren't able to complete were the addition or the installation of six exhaust fans. So what those fans do is, they take the corrosive environment inside the building, and they bring it outside. We actually treat the air through a biofilter. If we don't replace those fans, what'll happen is, the money that we've spent on our infrastructure will actually not be well-served, because as you can see in the picture, which Kyle's showing you now, is the wall panels, exterior wall panels and other things will be corroded. So we're trying, we wanna finish this project in order to save our, our infrastructure over there. The very last piece of this is a amendment storage building, which we use to store the sawdust. Now, it's very important to keep the sawdust as dry as possible. We don't want it to be soaked with water. If it were soaked with water, it would be harder to make our compost. It would cost more money to actually remove the water from the wet sawdust. So the amendment storage building is in dire need of replacement, so that is the last piece of the project that we're proposing to do.
So that's the project, and now we can talk about the funding of the project and the cost of the project. So the total cost for the project is, our engineers estimate is $22.6 million, which is obviously quite a big number. We're proposing to structure the, the bonds for the project in, in a two-phase manner. So what residents will see on the ballot this year in April will be the first part, the first request. And that's gonna be for a $13.1 million bond. And what that would be able to fund is the, the four most critical parts of the project, which are the two external pump stations, Sohegan and Thornton's Ferry, the main pump station, and the new screenings building. And then next year, on the warrant article, we, we anticipate putting the, the second phase of the funding at $9.5 million. The reason we're, we're doing it this way is to, you know, try and, try and give the voters the best bang for their buck by delaying the, the second bond to, to, to make it more cost-effective. The first bond, I should've said, will also allow us to do the entire design. So when we, when this funding comes through, the very first thing we'll do is hire our consultant to do the design for the entire project. So then we'll be ready to go whenever we do get the funding. One of the very important things I wanted to drive home tonight is that the funding for the, any of our wastewater projects does not come from the tax base, the general fund tax base. It comes from the users of the sewer system itself. So if you're on the sewer system, you'll contribute to this project. If you're not, you don't. The way we're proposing to fund the project is through a series of, of cost increases to the sewer users. We'll start with a 12% increase this year, and then every other year, we have proposed increases of 12, 12, and then 5% in the year '25, '26. The net result of that, so the, the current rate for residential sewer users is $242. It's a flat fee for all residential. If the, the four upgrades over 10 years, the four increases over 10 years goes through, the sewer fee for a residential customer would be $357, or about $115 more over 10 This slide is one I'm very proud of, and it speaks to the affordability of the plant and, and why we need to raise the rates to, to fund this project. So if you look all the way over, so these blue lines represent the 85 communities in New Hampshire that have sewer systems. This little dot over here, 242, that's where Merrimack is today. We're the fifth lowest rate in the, in the state. If we did all of the proposed increases, as we anticipate, we would be the 12th lowest in the state, presuming none of these had increases over that 10 years, which is not likely. So even though it seems like a big ask, and, and we, we hate to, to do the ask, but we need to, it's still going to be a reasonable rate for, for Merrimack users. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you folks might have.
Kyle, two things. Are you, if you did the project as one instead of in two pieces, would there be any cost savings?
So essentially, we are doing it as one project. What'll happen, it takes, it'll take probably a year and a half to design the project. So the first bond will get us going with the design, and then the second bond will come through just as we're ready for construction.
Okay.
So we, we are anticipating the, the economies of scale, and we did look at that. We had a few meetings with the town council, and we, we threw about various scenarios, whether we stagger a Phase III, Phase IV project. That would've resulted in roughly a million and a half to $2 million extra cost in, in inflation and, and interest rates, presuming they go up. The council made the decision to do it as one project. But we're splitting the bonds purely for voter's sake.
And the other question relates to the, if you like, the second jar down there, and that thing isn't dissolving. Is there nothing you can do to stop the use of these things in this town?
There really isn't. The town council, I suppose, could create an ordinance telling people not to use it, but, you know, the, the realism is, is it's unenforceable. The, the only time we know somebody put wipes down is when there is a blockage, and we can trace it to a particular person. It would be, it would simply be unenforceable.
But I'm interested, and the reason I say it is, that many places, hospitals, I'm thinking particularly, put a ban on using these things, that they've got special receptacles in, and so you don't put the damn things down the toilet.
Right. And if everyone followed the laws, we wouldn't need a police force. But we do.
I think that's been the approach in places that have looked at these things, is not so much to try to enforce it at the bathroom level, but prevent them from being sold in areas.
Right, and that, and that would be the key. And until, unless and until that happens, it will be a problem. And one of the, the things we're hoping to do by this presentation is to get the education out to people that this really is a problem. We're not suggesting that, that people who like to use them shouldn't use them. We're just suggesting, don't flush them.
I mean, you can see what the flushable, what the supposedly flushable one would do, but all of the baby wipes and things that you use changing diapers, they, they don't even say flushable on them, but people still gonna flush them.
That's correct.
And all the Clorox sanitation wipes and everything else are gonna get flushed, and those things are tough as hell.
And Sarita chose not to talk about that tonight, to, to sort of sanitize the presentation.
So, thank you for that. How are you gonna upgrade the airplane while it's still flying? How do you, you guys obviously have a plant that has to be in service throughout this whole process.
So what we do, what we do have at the plant is, we have grinders. And these grinders get plugged pretty much every day, or, or every couple of days. We also have some very, very old grinders in Thornton's Ferry and Sohegan, and that's how we manage it right now, along with going through and cleaning various areas of the plant on a very routine basis. So one of the things that will, we're going to have to do during the actual construction phase, because we're gonna actually have to bypass certain components, is to be very vigilant on going back to the sewer lines and sewer systems. I'm keeping an eye on them and cleaning them out regularly.
Not just for wipes, but, but for the upgrades of the entire plant, you're gonna have, the whole plant's gotta be in use.
Oh, so...
Whether it's flushable wipes or not.
Yeah, so the whole plant will still be operational. Can you actually go back to the picture of the plant itself? Thank you. So if you take a look at this, with the primary clarifier, when we take care of the primary clarifier, we have two other clarifiers that are operational. When we do the main pump station, we actually have a scenario to bypass the main pump station. This new screenings building will actually be constructed. There will be no water going to the new screenings building until it's completely constructed and online, so that will not be an issue. When you look at the secondary clarifiers, we will, we will schedule the, the changeout of the mechanisms in a manner that we can maintain at least one or two clarifiers online. So it'll all be scheduling, and with a project this size, I mean, the contractors are very used to this.
Thank you for that. Other comments or questions?
Mike?
Just, just to reemphasize what you were saying before, even though we were kind of focusing on flushables, the cost is really for the upgrades of the fact that the plant is old.
Yes.
There's a, there's a component that we're addressing with the flushables, but really, the cost is to stay in compliance and to be able to maintain the level of service that you're providing for now and for the future.
Yeah, the, the cost of the new screenings building is very small compared to the cost of the, the upgrade, which is needed for the age of the facility.
Nelson?
A couple of questions. First of all, with regard to the swap-out at the pump stations, the Sohegan and Thornton's pump stations, there you've got just one pump online, right?
That's correct.
That's operating. Now, you've gotta get that pump out and the new one in pretty quickly, right? How do you bypass?
So there will be, there will be a very short period of time of bypass scenario.
Yeah.
Where we'll be able to, we'll have alternative pumping options for us that we'll bring in, and then we'll swap out the pumps. So you schedule it, it's a very tight schedule, because you cannot be down for a week in a pump station.
Yeah.
Especially Thornton's Ferry and Sohegan, which is different for our main pump station.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, there's no redundancy there. And is there a, a why or something where you can connect a bypass if you need it?
Yes, they're all, yeah.
Well, a, a good example of how it'll be done, Nelson, is, you'll remember back in 2006 when we had the flood, the Mother's Day flood.
Do you remember?
We lost part of our interceptor.
Right.
And during that entire time, what happened was, we installed a bypass pump from one manhole where the interceptor was still good, to back around to the next manhole where the interceptor was still good. Now, that was in place for months, until we could get the line built back in. So in this case, with the pump station, it'll be the same scenario, but in a much more confined space, because it's a controlled repair.
Yeah. One other question I had, Bob, was the, how are individuals in town billed for their sewer system, those who use the sewer system? How is that billing done?
Residential rate payers are billed twice a year on their property taxes. It shows up on their property tax.
It does.
And commercial users, Sarita, I believe, are billed separately?
Oh, yeah, they're billed separately. High-use, commercial users are monthly, and then other commercial users are quarterly or semi-annually, depending on how it's structured for them.
And individuals are annually or semi-annually?
Semi-annual on their taxes.
Semi-annual on the tax bill, okay, thank you.
How many households do you have connected to the system?
I don't know.
A bunch.
A bunch.
A bunch, I'm sorry.
That's a great question, we can get that answer for you.
I'll get that answer.
I think from our master plan, there's a total of about 9,000 households in town, so I don't know what percentage of the town coverage you've got.
So I know in the last couple of years, or in the last 10 years, we've had condos come online, so that's where, I really don't know, because some of these condos associations, they'll pay, the association will just pay the sewer bill, in some cases, it's individual townhouses or condos, but I'll go back and I'll look.
Yeah, we've got a lot of concentrated apartments and condos along EWI, so. Dan, question?
Thank you for that presentation, it was great, very informative. Just had a couple of comments slash questions. The new, all these new changes, is that going to increase the ability, or increase the amount of gallons of sewage that can be treated, or is it going to stay the same?
So the plant's designed for 5 million gallons per day, our upgrades won't change that. We will still be a plant designed for 5 million gallons per day.
Okay, that's adequate for a town this size?
So our average flow ranges between 1.8 to about 1.9 million gallons per day. We have a peak of about 2.3 million gallons per day, so I don't see it as being...
When's the peak?
If it rains, we will actually have runoff. So our stormwater system, for the back end of the plant where the biosolids are, that actually runs off into our wastewater treatment plant.
Gotcha.
So we'll have high flow from those situations. Also, if we have users, industrial users, peak flow from them, because they're in production, and they're making a lot of things, then we'll have some peak flow from them as well.
That makes sense, it sounds like the 5 million gallons...
We're about half, we're fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay, and then on a completely separate note, I was reading the article about Wisconsin and their PFOS issues that they're dealing with, same with what we're dealing with, and basically, the article stated that wastewater treatment plants don't treat for PFOS, and everything's getting treated, and then as it goes into the Wisconsin-Green Bay, you're essentially putting PFOS into the bay. Have you guys given any thought to filtering PFOS before the Merrimack River?
So, right now, there isn't a requirement to treat for PFOS comp, or perfluoralkyl substances. You are correct that wastewater treatment plants do not treat for them, but understanding what happens to those compounds as they come into the wastewater treatment plant and they go through the process is something that we're still trying to figure out. So you have precursors that can break down, that sometimes can create some more of these perfluoralkyl substances that we perhaps don't like, so we're not quite sure, and research is being done on that right now. In terms of treatment, right now, the primary treatment for these compounds is ion exchange, filtration, followed by granular activated carbon. And if you look at a plant that is, you know, 1.8 million gallons per day, the utilization rate of the carbon would be very, very high, because we're not drinking water. So for drinking water systems, when you treat with the carbon, you're treating very, very clean water, essentially. In our systems, you have a lot of other stuff in it. So you have inorganic compounds, you have dissolved solids that would be removed, maybe preferentially over the PFAS compound, so I don't know that it's economically feasible. What I do know is a lot of the universities right now are studying oxidation technologies, of which PFOA seems to be oxidized, PFOAS seems to be a little bit resistant to oxidation, and so I think we need to have science catch up with us a little bit before we really look at that. What I also want to say is if you take a look at some of the recent sampling on the Merrimack River itself, there wasn't an indicator that the Merrimack River was significantly contaminated for these PFAS compounds.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I just think it's going to become an issue as PFAS becomes a more recognizable term in society, that we're going to have, I mean, it's just, I was just thinking that it's more like, we've treated the water in certain places, or we're planning on doing that, and then we have an opportunity to really stop it on the wastewater side of things. And I understand what you're saying about how the technology's not there yet, but I just think it's something that, you know, should be at least considered.
So I would just like to make one point, I don't think we should minimize treating the water, the drinking water side of things. So if you look at MVD bringing their systems online, and you look at all the people who are drinking that water, if you remove those PFAS compounds in the drinking water, it will definitely have a huge impact on the back end of things. So I think we shouldn't minimize that, as well as the fact that DES has installed a bunch of point source treatment systems for people who do not receive drinking water, that's going to have a big impact. So I would say, let's give it, let's take a look and see what's happening, let's see where we are after all these systems come online, and then look at it. Again, I really believe that science is going to get us to the point that we'll have a way to treat without using something like carbon, it'll be something where we're able to actually degrade these compounds in the systems themselves.
One more question about the biosolids and compost, does the biosolids ever get removed, or is it all composted right there?
So we, all of the biosolids go through our compost facility.
Okay, because there's other facilities, like Lowell and some up in Vermont, that take their biosolids and remove them and put them onto cornfields or whatever, that doesn't happen in Merrimack?
So our compost is sold, and our compost has gone, I think, one place it's been was in Central Park. It's used, right now, it's sold to golf clubs, it's used as top dressing in golf courses, it's used on sports fields. We have actually a company that markets and sells our compost for us, and it's sold in New Hampshire, New York, I think I do have a thing that says all of the states.
Yeah, it's AgroSource.
Yeah, AgroSource, yes.
Yeah, I know who that is. I was just curious, because, I mean, again, with the cycle, I mean, if the PFOS is in the biosolid, then it's, you're essentially taking it off-site and putting it somewhere else.
Okay, so you brought up a really good question. One of the things that needs to be done, and in DES's recent study that they did for toxicology to develop the MCL for PFOA, PFOS, they actually said, and that you need to do leachability studies, in order to determine the rate at which these compounds would leach out of the soil into the groundwater. So now, something interesting to note, is that if you look at metals in compost, the compost actually binds the metals, so that they don't leach out of the soil into the groundwater. So we really don't know what the answer is and what the rate of leachability is, and those studies are being conducted right now, and definitely based on those, we're going to need to respond to whatever issues there are.
No, I just, I used to use the compost for my tomatoes, I don't use it anymore. Just saying.
It is a Class A biosolid?
No, that doesn't bother me, that's not the part that bothers me. The part that bothers me is the PFOS, I don't want it in my tomatoes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for the questions. So you probably know what the projected life of the new facility will be, or was expected to be. What was the projected life in 1970 when the system that we have now went online?
So typically, most facilities and most equipment is projected for anywhere to 20 to 30 years. So the new facility will be projected, and it's not a new facility, we're replacing components of the existing facility that are 50 years old. So those components are projected to last at least 30 years, because we are looking at getting a 30-year bond, or a 30-year loan for them.
Okay. So the life that we've gotten out of the existing stuff is much more than it was projected, or probably projected back in 1970. It probably, when it was originally installed, should have lasted till 1990 or 2000 or so, and here we are 20 years after that.
We've got a great team at the wastewater treatment plant, they do a phenomenal job, and they keep things running, and it's just, they're just an amazing group of people, we're very lucky to have them.
Thank you for that.
Tom?
I just wanted to go back for a minute and talk about those sewer rates that you pointed out, and just kind of amplify for folks that what we showed here was the household sewer rates, did not include the commercial. Commercial's going to get an increase as well, so I didn't want anybody to walk away thinking only the residents of town that are using the sewer will be paying for this. It'll be paid by all of the users, and what we're able to easily show is the household rate increase. And this number that you showed, $242, is an annual cost, right?
Correct.
So we're not talking about a monthly or anything like that, this is an annual, it's split in two, it shows up on your tax bill. So the increase over the next six years or more, or even more than that, yeah, would only be 100 and something dollars, split in half, so we're talking about $50, and you're seeing larger increases than that in your property taxes from lots of sources, and this is going to be a fairly, any dollar is important, but it's a fairly minor increase when you consider the value add, or the return on your investment as far as being able to continue to use our wastewater treatment plant. So I think it's just very important that everybody understands that this is, comes out of the sewer rate, it doesn't come out of the property taxes, the increase is fairly minor, especially when you showed that graph of where we are with respect to other communities that have wastewater plants. And I know you said all those things, I'm just trying to amplify them.
No, and that's a great point, Tom, and I'll bounce off of that too, because I should have mentioned that, and I'll mention one other thing in line with that. So with our current rate structure, the commercial users will experience the same 12% increase as the residential customers. In the proposed budget this year, we have money set, we have money programmed for an updated rate study. 10 years ago, we did a rate study, we hired a company to kind of go through all of our customers, all of our costs, and come up with a fair and equitable way to raise the revenues we need to, to operate the system. We're going to do a new look at that 10 years later. So the mix could change, it could stay the same, we won't know until we do the rate study. But the first increase, which will be experienced next year, will be based on the current rate study, so it'll be equally shared over commercial users and residential users. Thank you, Tom.
No problem.
Thank you, you guys had a great presentation.
Yes, Tom, that was a great point about the cost, and I wanted to compare it to some of the others of us that are still laboring with our own septic systems and what the cost of those are, and so, I haven't built one recently, but in a new construction, you're talking about $4,000 or $5,000 to put in your own septic system, and if you've ever got to replace one in the same spot on your lot, where you're removing the old one or replacing the new one, you can spend three times the original cost replacing one there. And everybody that's paying 242 or 357 or anywhere in between ought to be just writing you guys Christmas cards all the time, because it's happy as you can be to have it reliable and to know that it's not going to fail, and you won't have a sudden cost that you've got to incur, or the initial cost that you put down, or a raised part of your backyard that has to be leveled and flat with a, you know, vent pipe on it and all the rest of that that goes with it.
Yeah, and digging up your backyard every other year to pump it.
Yeah, you guys only got about 600 more feet to go to get to my house, so hopefully, although I got a new septic system, relatively new. Other comments or questions? Thank you so much for the presentation, it's really helpful. I'm glad not only to hear it and receive it, but also to have it in a televised venue where more people at home can see it, and I know you're getting around to town council and some others to be able to give them the same presentation, and the more chances you get to get the word out, I think it really will not only help educate people, but hopefully encourage everybody to vote for the thing, because it seems to be very, very much needed. And when you're rolling the dice with 50-year-old equipment that should have lasted 20 or 30 years, the catastrophic costs that come when failure hits will outstrip this project by a long way.
For sure, thank you.
Certainly will, good job.
Thank you.
And I encourage you guys, if you know of any other groups who would like to see this presentation, or you think should see this presentation, please let me know. We're, as you mentioned, we're traveling around this week to three different venues, and we'd be happy to do many more shows to educate the public. The wastewater plant is kind of that thing that's just down in the south end of town that nobody really thinks about, but it really is a critical part of our infrastructure.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't be surprised if the Conservation Commission was interested, and also perhaps the Nashua Regional Planning Commission. Can't speak for either one of them, but I bet they'd both be interested in knowing what it's like. I know that when our, we had a meeting at the Nashua Regional Planning Commission with representatives from all of the towns in the region, and I could say that Merrimack was, you know, sort of on the large size compared to all the towns with professional staff and some ability to do some things that so many small towns could never do. And so giving them some information about how this stuff works, or what happens after a bunch of years, could be something that they'd never get an experience with otherwise, so.
Great point, thank you.
Thank you for that. Let's move on with our agenda, thank you guys for coming. And that thing still hasn't dissolved in the jar?
It hasn't dissolved yet.
Excuse me. Okay. Blessings.
God.
The next item on our agenda is Edgebrook Heights LLC as the applicant, and Edgebrook Heights LLC and Q. Peter Dash 1987 Revocable Trust Number One as the owners. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan to construct 232 multifamily residences, 156 family and 76 elderly housing units, a clubhouse and associated site improvements per the requirements of the Edgebrook Conditional Use Permit. The parcel is located at 1 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1E Lot 41, 42, 2E Lot 7 and 8, and it would be located on a newly configured Tax Map 1E Lot 41, oh, it's due to grant the subdivision before, so it's sort of reading in here. The items continued from our November 13, December 4, and January 8, 2019 meetings. Kelly, is there anything that we need to know before you hear from the applicant?
Nope, we'll go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself again, although we've seen your familiar faces many times. Introduce yourself for the record and for the folks at home, and then tell us what you got to propose.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is Tom Zajak, I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street in Nashua. Here tonight representing Edgebrook Heights LLC. To my left is Attorney Brad Westgate from Weiner &amp; Bennett. Also with us here tonight is Mr. Bernie Plant from Edgebrook Heights LLC, and Mr. Bob Simons from SMC Management. As you know, we have been before the board on multiple occasions the last few months associated with the Edgebrook Heights Mixed Use Development Project. We were granted conditional approval on December 4 for the CUP. At our last meeting on January 8, we were granted conditional approval for the consolidation and subdivision plan associated with the project, as well as the application acceptance and public hearing for the site plan application before you tonight. So tonight, we're seeking final approval for the site plan, for the first phase of the Edgebrook project, to be known as Residences at Edgebrook. Mr. Chair, I'd just like to provide a brief update of what's taken place since the last meeting, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Tom, for that update, please proceed.
So as I mentioned, the project team gave a detailed summary of the major aspects of the residents at Edgebrook project at the January 8 meeting. I'd be happy to dive back into any of the issues or matters that were discussed at that hearing. Since the meeting, we've revised and resubmitted the site plan... Since the meeting, we've revised and resubmitted the site plans and studies to address all local and state review comments. Some of the notable revisions that we made to the plans, we slightly modified the entrance road to a private street to be known as Benning Court to provide a slip right-hand turn into the site for northbound vehicles, and this was based on a DOT recommendation. We added a sidewalk connection between Pioneer Way and the clubhouse building per the board's request. We revised the drainage and stormwater system throughout the site to increase the buffer along Penetra Brook, eliminate any impacts within the 100-year flood zone, and to account for the future development of commercial Lot C within our stormwater design. We added designated snow storage areas throughout the site. We revised the fire lanes from a reinforced grass turf paver to standard pavement per comment from the fire department. We've added a berman fence along the northerly property line per the CUP approval and third-party settlement agreement. We've added a detailed sign package throughout the site, including monument signs for the project, along with dog waste removal signs and receptacles. I know that was discussed last meeting. Lastly, we revised the lighting plan to include full cutoff LID, LED fixtures. One of the main comments that the board had last time was asking about some increased pedestrian connectivity between Building 1 and the clubhouse and Buildings 2. So if you look at the plan here, what was discussed was, you know, can we look at providing a sidewalk connection in this area here, and then also between the parking lot to the clubhouse? So we did take a look at it, and, you know, in looking at it in a 2D plan, it certainly looks like a connection can easily be made. But the site design includes a terrace development pad for Building 1, the clubhouse, and Building 2, and there's about 15 to 20 feet of elevation change between those various pads. And so this elevation change makes things problematic in terms of providing a safe and accessible route along those, what I would call more remote routes, especially considering we've got elderly housing tenants in Building 1. So the possible sidewalk connection that we would be looking at would likely include long switchbacks and likely stairs to make this connection, and we feel like that this could become a safety and maintenance concern, having these more remote connections that would require those elements. So our response here tonight is that we did look at that, but we feel the best and safest pedestrian route is to follow the sidewalks along the street, which are an accessible route. And also in terms of the accessibility point, we do provide accessible parking spaces at the clubhouse for those who want to drive to that location. Mr. Chair, per our conversation last meeting, I did submit a formal parking waiver request as outlined in my letter dated January 24th, 2019. I believe this letter and the rationale behind it is consistent with our discussions during the CUP approval process, and what we represented as part of that approval. I can read that into the record if necessary.
Want to summarize it into the record? You don't have to read the entire letter, but just the gist of-
So Section 7.03E requires a minimum number of off-street parking spaces to be required. We're asking for a waiver to construct 403 parking spaces for this project where a minimum of 507 spaces is required. The project includes four residential buildings. As I mentioned, we're a little more than 100 spaces short per code. When analyzed separately, the elderly housing building does meet code, which is 1.5 spaces per unit. The rest of the Buildings 2 through 4 and the clubhouse provide approximately 1.84 spaces per unit, where the code would require 2.5. We feel like the amount of spaces required is more in keeping with industry standards. As we've talked about during the CUP process in 2014, we looked at a number of other developments in town, and they seem to follow that 1.75 number. We feel that the parking provided is adequate to meet the tenants' needs. I did also speak to, we do have an area in the bottom part of the site where there's a proposed dog park and some open space now, where we could provide more spaces to meet code if possible. I did not want to show those spaces and include that in the design plan, because then we would have to beef up stormwater and other areas of the site to accommodate that design. And our testimony here tonight is that the parking that we've provided is consistent with the CUP approval and the needs of our client.
Tom, with respect to the waiver request, I think the one concern we discussed before, but I still want to make sure we addressed, is if you're, if the property management company feels like 1.75 or 1.84, whatever you have is the right number, that there'd be some clear signage in your package of signs that tell people not to park along the roadway, or, I know it's a private roadway, but indications that, you know, they can't overflow park along, what's the name of the main roadway?
Pioneer Way.
Pioneer Way. Is that something in your sign package that you've got addressed?
We did not add no parking signs along that private street. I think my client would be open to adding those in select locations.
I think when you look at Building 1, the clubhouse, and Building 2, it's unlikely people are going to park on Pioneer Way because it's really inconvenient to have done so, but maybe down by Buildings 3 and 4, some indication that tells people where they're not supposed to park.
Okay. Because at that point, the private street is kind of melding into the parking lot in that location, so I'm not really sure where we would sign down there.
Not only that, Mr. Chairman, it may be, how would it be enforced unless the property company does the enforcement? Because I don't believe the police will enforce it on a private road.
I think it still can be enforceable because they're required by the fire department as part of their approval to keep their way clear for the fire trucks. And if they park cars along the side of the road, especially if it happens to be on both sides of the road, you will prevent fire trucks from getting down the road. And so we could hold the applicant to enforcing their regulations. I think our fire department probably would like us to as well. I don't, I don't know whether it's the biggest requirement or biggest demand in the world, a sign or two in some of the areas along Pioneer Way when you're outside of the parking areas to say, "No parking."
Coming down and around the hill?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Not so much at the top. It's really close, between Building 3 and Building 2, that last bit of the curve, I think, is where you might have some folks where they get down there at the bottom and there's no place to park, and so they grab whatever's closest when they come to visit. Thank you for that. I know that there were some comments from the Department of Public Works about notes on the plan. I don't remember what the specific notes were, and also some monitoring wells related to both the dog park area and the potential gas station use that could be in a future phase, to make sure that none of that is affecting the brook and the river. Did you, are you aware of that? Did you meet with Dawn and kind of understand what her-
So we received her second round of comments on Monday, and I did speak with her this afternoon to kind of go through each portion. She had four comments back in November. All four comments are on the second round. As I understand it, she did not get my response letter that went with the plans, so that's why her comments are still there. We discussed them on the phone this afternoon, and I'm confident I can address those four comments. There were also seven new comments, most of them, you know, notes that she wants to add to the plan regarding stormwater, and the fact that Public Works wants to make sure that these roads and streets are going to be private and privately maintained, and make sure that that's clear, that the town doesn't have any responsibility there, which we're fine with. All those notes are fine adding to the plan.
Yeah, I didn't expect the notes or those sorts of things would be an issue, but tell me about monitoring wells.
Monitoring wells, so as I understand it, because we're designating that open space area as a dog park, and the Merrimack River is listed, E. coli is listed as part of the Merrimack impaired waters, there's some increased standards there in terms of how we treat our stormwater, and also how we enforce, you know, dog waste removal practices. So that was also in my, in my letter to her, including a letter from Bob Simons from SMC. He was here last meeting and gave you guys a rundown of their program, the doggy DNA testing, and the three-strikes-you're-out policy in terms of waste removal. So that's kind of our twofold approach. We've got increased dog signs and waste receptacles in that area, you know, to alert those tenants to make sure they pick up their waste. On top of that, Dawn still would like for a monitoring well to be installed, or wells is the way she put it, in the area between the dog park and the railroad. The thought being that if any increased contaminants do come from the dog waste area, that would be a way to identify those prior to entering the stormwater management basin.
So are you willing to accept that recommendation from the department, or do you-
I would, I would say that we are willing to continue to have that conversation with her and satisfy all her concerns.
Surely you know that the Department of Environmental Services is bringing out a new regulation to cover all sorts of waste waters. I think she calls it MS4. And although the full details of that are not yet public, she's, you know, being careful to recognizing it's going to come, and we don't want to have to come back to you and say, "Hey, guys, your project doesn't meet the requirements of MS4." So I think we'd be looking for you to say, "Yes, you understand what she wants, and yes, you would agree to the private well monitoring."
We will, we will very much meet her requirements. I think I'd like to just better understand what she's looking for in terms of, it says to install a monitor well. I'm not sure if there's testing or reporting requirements that she's looking for, but certainly we will address and satisfy her concerns there.
Okay. So with a little bit more insight of what her intent were, yes, there would be a testing and reporting requirement. I don't know how frequent. I suspect that what she would say is, "You propose the testing and reporting plan, and the board, this board or her department could consider it and potentially approve it as a part of this review." So I don't think that she's got in mind instructions as to what she likes to do, or what have you do, but would be looking for you guys to make the proposal for what you think's adequate, and then they would respond to it, which is, how they review everything else and design it for you. Okay, I'm glad to hear that you believe that you can satisfy those concerns. It sounds like, from the way you're describing it, you still feel like you may talk her into a different approach to this, and I'm happy to wish you luck with that. In terms of the board's approach, we would require as a condition of approval that you satisfy all the forthcoming comments from the DPW. And if you weren't able to do that, then you could certainly come back before the board to ask for some relief, although you'd be paddling upstream.
We understand.
Other comments or questions, members of the board? Tom?
The note that we have from, this is from Kelly?
Yeah.
Says that another Public Works Department request is, or concern about the break in the island at Benning Court. Can you address that?
So that was a comment that came up from DOT as part of, we had a scoping meeting back last summer to kick off the project, talk about the scope of the traffic study and what DOT is going to be looking for in terms of their requirements, in terms of the intersection and off-site roadway improvement design, which is ongoing. And one of the comments that was brought up is that they wanted us to consider not having a break in this median here. If you remember the CUP plan, we were proposing a gas station convenience store here in another commercial building, along with a commercial building in the back. So what they wanted us to do was to maintain that median and send everybody back to the cul-de-sac. So in my response letter, I was kind of pushing back on that for a number of reasons. We feel like we fall within DOT's recommended setback in terms of from the edge of pavement along Daniel Webster Highway to that break. We provided some information to show that the gas station, that folks waiting to take a left turn into the future gas station, that there wouldn't be any stacking issues. And so when I spoke with Dawn this afternoon, and both when she made that original comment back in November, I don't want to speak for her, but I think her intent was, was to call attention to that comment to everybody, but not necessarily something that she was, she was pushing for. So the project has submitted the plans and driveway permit to DOT. It's currently under review, so we have to make that case and address that case with her, with him.
So, thank you for that explanation, but you, a couple of times, were using pronouns for "they" and "them," and I didn't know whether "they" or "them" was Dawn or the DOT.
DOT.
So the DOT proposed the idea of saying, "Let's not have a break in the island," and you're having a debate with them because you think it's a good idea to have a break in the island to get to the gas station?
Correct.
Excellent.
Yeah. We find it to be a little bit circuitous to be sending everybody back to the cul-de-sac only to come back into the site specifically for something like a gas station or a convenience store when they're likely looking for that quick access. Like I said, we feel we meet the recommendations outlined in terms of setbacks for that break from the street.
How far is it from the street to the first opening? We discussed this at our last meeting, by the way, and I'm fully on board with what you're saying with, "Don't make people go around the roundabout to get to the gas station," because it'll just, it'll make that site undevelopable. No gas station operator will come forward and want to build there. So you'll never have to go around that cul-de-sac to get to the gas station, because there'll never be a gas station there. But how far is it?
160 feet.
160 feet? Certainly don't see that.
Car is 20, right? So that's about eight spaces?
A big car's 20. I mean, my pickup truck's 20.
Okay, but you're going to leave space between cars and stuff like that.
Yeah, no question. Yeah, if there's no reason why people would be at a stop there, and they're just sort of watching for whatever oncoming cars come, I can't imagine you'd stack eight cars.
Yeah, you're probably right there. But you have people coming out of the elderly housing unit and turning left to go out and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's another one, is to make those people from the elderly housing unit-
Go around the circles just to come back out, yeah.
Yeah, it's-
Well, I agree. So does DOT have a final say on whether you can do that or not?
That application was just submitted a week or so ago, so-
Okay.
The DOT driveway permit, that will be evaluated at that point, and we'll need to satisfy their requirements in order to get that permit.
Okay. I'm good then. Thank you.
Hopefully you'll achieve that relief from them, so. I would not like it any better just because they demanded it. Other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Just one more. I didn't see on the plan, I know you've agreed that the dog park would be a future parking space if needed, and I'd like to see a note on the plan to that effect. I didn't see one. Maybe I missed it. Is it on there?
I did not add, I did not add-
Do you have an objection to putting it on there just for the future reference if this comes back?
I have no problem putting it on there. The problem is that a lot of times when we do put future parking on a plan, then we're asked to design drainage and infrastructure to then support that parking.
But, well, you would be. If you had, if you had to pave that, you would have to.
Correct.
But the waiver request that has been submitted does specifically spell out, it has the probability to support additional parking should more parking be really specifically in the area of the proposed dog park. It's actually in the-
Yeah.
Yes, but it's not on the plan. That's my only-
And this is kind of, this affects you guys in the choices that you make. If you proceeded with the plan as it is, and you add a note that says the parking would be in the general area of the dog park, but we didn't do the designing to the drainage and all of those kinds of things, when you, if you ever needed to build those, then you got to come back and get review, and then we're going to have engineering review, then we're going to have peer review. If you took care of all of that right now, you would have the option to build that parking at will, if you ever needed it, when you ever needed it, because it would be a vested approved part of the site plan. Could save you some headaches. On the other side of the coin, if you're really confident that you're never going to need it, well, that's the choice as well. But if you came back in five years or 10 years and our regulations are different, and MS4 has become MS7, and the restrictions are crazy high, you don't know what you'll meet. And so, you know, there could be some advantage to getting her all done now. But I think that's a choice that the applicant holds. Other than saying, "We would like a note on the plan to say if you required additional parking, you would put it in this general area," I don't think that we as a board would demand more than that. But don't have to, you don't have to make that call right here as you sit. as you sit before us.
For the record, Brad Westgate, Weiner and Bennett representing the applicant. I'm just thinking through what, how a note presently could read. One way to read it, well, one reference could simply be, note that the waiver request, assuming it was granted tonight, waiver request granted, and that'll, by inference, tie into
Yep.
what Mr. Milne said is component of that waiver request. Another note could, could add to that note, I suppose, a little bit. Dog park area could be considered potential future parking area. What Tom was trying to say was, of course, that if he depicts it on the plan in dashed lines, that, that imposes the design, the stormwater management elements to it, which is what the chair was saying. But I think that, I think the team is confident enough to not, to not think that it will be needed in the future, and therefore not design the elements of the stormwater management package. So, so we should decide tonight if a note is to be put on the plan, whether it be along the lines of a reference to the waiver, and then tied in by inference, or a little more of a bland notion of a potential location of future parking to be the dog park site.
And for me, it could be as simple as on whatever sheet this is, thirteen of thirty-four, where the dog park is shown, right, where it says dog park slash potential future parking. I mean, it's not much more different than that is what we're thinking.
That's fine.
That's what I had in mind.
Yeah. I agree, and frankly, the simpler words, the better. I agree.
And then ultimately, it's rental apartments, and you guys got to satisfy your tenants, and even if we had you fully designed it, it's not like we'd have a trigger where we're going to come tell you that you got to build it, unless you start blocking the fire lanes. And then you'll hear, you know, complaints about not being in compliance with the plan. It's, if, unless there's other comments if you'd like to make.
One other question. Could you remind me that the, the road that goes around the back of the building, specifically three and four, but the other ones as well, is fire lane access road. Is that open and accessible to people as well, or is there something that stops people from driving down there or parking down there?
We have signage at each entrance locations saying fire lane, no parking, but there, there isn't any gate or anything like that.
Okay.
At the present time.
But it definitely does say no parking along there.
It does, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, let's take up the applicant's request for a parking waiver, which was...
Mr. Chairman, actually, if I read the staff's memo from Kelly, it just say we haven't actually voted to accept the application.
You did. You did subdivision and site plan at the same time last meeting.
Oh, we did. All right, so we can scrub that. My apologies.
Oh, thank you for that.
I just read what they, what the staff puts down.
It's the right idea to watch out for us. So there's a request to waive the provisions of 7.03E, which would require, how many parking spaces did you tell me?
Five hundred and seven, and they've only provided 403.
There you go. What's the will of the board with respect to the waiver?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the waiver as requested by the applicant based on the facts and figures that he puts before us in his letter dated January 24, 2019.
I'm going to cite the statutory provision, please.
Sorry, on the basis, I never remember. On the basis that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Okay. Mike, you seconded it. Any further discussion on the parking waiver? I'm glad to support the waiver. When it comes time to vote, I think that it's a, when you see parking waivers that number 100 spaces versus the regulations, we're really counting on the applicant's judgment and their, and their experience for how this will work, and the fact that ultimately it's going to be your problem if it doesn't work. But it is always a little difficult to swallow down a waiver of greater than 100 spaces. That's a big waiver, so. But I do support it. That's the only comment that I would offer. If there's nobody else that wishes to comment on the waiver, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So we are six zero zero tonight to grant the waiver. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in and offer the board any advice as we consider the rest of the application and potential final disposition of it? If there's no abutters, we'll close the public hearing. Does the board have further discussion for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I would therefore, on the basis that I hear nothing from my colleagues, that we make a motion, that we accept, grant conditional final approval to this application on the basis of the notes from Kelly Schimmel dated January 31, 2019, plus a complete assurance from the applicant that he is going to meet all the requirements of the Public Works Department, which seems to me not quite covered, but I'd like it formally as part of the motion to accept.
Okay. Before I ask for a second for your motion, we also had a little bit of a discussion, or at least I did, about no parking signs along Pioneer Way. Would that be part of a condition?
It is great pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion? Second by Mike. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Any abstaining? It is five one zero with Council Koenig opposed. So you are conditionally finally approved, subject to conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for the presentation. Item five on our agenda is the Monahan Companies as the applicant and Merrimack Parcel LLC as the owner. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved mixed-use development conditional use permit. The parcel is located at 10 Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial and Aqua Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 3C, lot 191-2, and its Case Planning Board 2019-5. Kelly, is there anything that we need to know before hearing from the applicant?
Just a reminder that this is an amendment to the CUP that was approved back in December of 2017, just to remind the board.
Thank you for that. So once you guys are all settled in, and I see you're going to work on a presentation, when you're all set up, please introduce yourself and tell us what we're doing. Redwin, you are. Introduce yourself and tell us what we're doing.
I've got a couple minutes to warm up. My name's Dave Fensdemacher from VHB. I'm representing the applicant tonight. As mentioned, we're looking at a project that was previously approved. We had a conditional use permit that was approved. Subsequently, site plan approval for phase one, and then we're also looking for the modifications to the roundabout for the premium outlets. That's part of our main access. So at that time, once we get the plan up, at that time, you know, it's a mixed use of apartments, hotel, office, retail, restaurant. There was a generic placeholder for... placeholder for the apartments. And we're here, because at this time, there's been a user identified for the site. We have a specific footprint and layout for the apartment.
I guess the big piece tonight is what we're looking at is, the original approval was for 192 units. The new building is 224 units. And it, previously it was three separate buildings. Now we have a bigger building with a parking garage associated with it. Your other laptops, Mark.
We have a...
No worries.
So the, the general layout, we have a chance to look at it, but you have the plans in front of you. The general layout of the access, circulation, pedestrian connectivity all remains the same from the original plan. The layouts of the hotel and office buildings remain the same. There's a, what we did was we looked at it from a number of issue, a number of items compared to the original one that we really focused on. Buffering, parking, fiscal impact, and drainage. I think one of the, the benefits, as we'll see from the plan when we get to see it, is originally we had to relocate the existing... There we go.
Yep, I figured you just hit number, building one. Yep.
Where previously we were relocating this emergency access that's there today along the residential building, I mean residential units. We're now able, based on the new layout, we eliminated the parking that was up here. We eliminated the relocation of that. So the 45-foot shift that was taking place during the original application has now been pulled back. So we'll be matching the existing access road there without having to cut down any of the trees. And Mr. Monahan's also, as part of his plan, enhancing the vegetation along that area. But just, just to reiterate what we walked through before, this is the area that we're focusing on tonight, was the area of the apartments with the 224 units and a 343 space parking lot. So overall, the parking, the additional 32 units resulted in an increase in the parking count, demand, but we were able to supplement that with the, the bigger parking garage. So overall, the parking required increased, but the parking provided also increased. We made sure that we have enough spaces on the surface and parking garages to accommodate both peak uses. So as I said in the staff notes, we did utilize the shared parking analysis as part of the original permit, and we are continuing to use that same methodology for this piece. In terms of the fiscal impacts, again, just focusing on the changes, we increased the number of units, which increased, slightly increased the number of employees generated, slightly increased the number of children that would be, there'd be impact to the school fees. But the increase of the size of the building and the addition of the parking garage more than supplemented that increase in the cost. So the, the net positive for the, for the fiscal impact is there. It's a positive impact. And overall, for drainage, there was, again, we were just focusing on this, this one area. There was no increase in the impervious, so we're able to utilize the permit that we, and approvals that we had for this previous stormwater from AOT. Just some minor modifications to the, the conveyance, but overall, the same general design intent. So I have the architects here if we have any questions, the apartment developers here, so.
Okay.
Just if you had any general questions. But I think that's the general overview. We're really here focusing on the additional 32 units compared to the original approval.
Thank you for going through that and walking us through it. I'm really glad to see the, the access road that's closest to Camp Sergeant Road staying where it is today and not moving 40 feet closer to those buildings, even though that's what we approved last time.
Yep.
So I'm glad to see that change. I noted on the plan that I have, but also it looks like on the one that's on the screen, the apartment building and parking deck and the thing below it used to be labeled Building A, Building B, Building C, and they're no longer labeled that way.
So that, yeah, that's now Building A.
Is what?
So B and C are gone, so it's combined into one building.
So everything in that peach color on your color chart is A now?
That's now all A, and everything else remained the same from the naming convention.
Okay. Now, your phasing plan also used that naming convention of A, B, C to describe your phases. Does your phasing plan need to be updated or corrected if A, B, and C are now just A?
I guess technically there are three pieces to it. There's the, sorry, the, the main building, the parking garage, and then this piece here. But yeah, the phasing, the intent is to, those will all be built as part of the same phase.
Okay. So what does the phasing plan say today? Is A, B, and C all part of Phase One?
I think so. I think they are, yeah.
Whatever it is.
Oh, yeah.
Make, make sure that they...
They are part of Phase One.
Make sure they're all in harmony with each other, and the plan describes the buildings in the same way that the phasing plan does.
So I will say the only, the changes as part of, previously A and B had first level retail and restaurant. These now have the amenities for the apartments on the first floor. So overall, the total number of retail and restaurant are still the same, but they've just been reallocated to Phase Two.
Okay.
As part of the plan.
So the, on your color sheet, the building that's furthest to the bottom with the blue rectangle in the middle of it is an office building now?
This building here, sorry.
I can't see. I mean, I'm not looking. Oh, turn around.
Doesn't work on that one.
You can't turn the laser.
Sorry. This one?
No, no, higher. That. Nope.
Well, the peach color, but the green square in the middle.
That one, that one right there.
Yeah, that's just a courtyard in the middle.
And that's an office building?
No, this is all apartment.
Okay.
That peach is all the same apartment. That, that peach is A, B, and C.
Okay. For some reason, it's blue over here and green over there.
Yeah. So Phase One would still be A, B, and C, which is now Building A, D, E, and F. So build, building the main entrance, building the main entrance and then building these, basically the first quadrant of the project.
What's the building height on your apartment building today and the parking deck?
We have four stories.
So you've actually gotten lower?
Lower.
Lower and further, two good choices.
Lower and further, yeah.
Well, is it further away or just the, just the roadway?
The impact, sorry. The building's the same. We're outside that 200-foot, but the, the impacts are further away. So we're, we didn't have to cut into those existing trees, and we're able to utilize the same.
I know, but the building itself?
The building's the same.
Is probably closer.
Same setback, the 200, we're right at the 200-foot setback.
Okay.
As the previous.
So you were moving the, the access road to allow the parking in there only?
Yeah, before there was parking up there, so we had to move the access road. Now that park, parking's gone and the access road stays in the same.
So I'm just trying to understand. The sidewalk we took where we tried to put out balloons to see where the edge of the building would be and stuff.
Building's the same.
That hasn't changed.
But the buffer's been enhanced from the previous.
And the building height has gone down by one story?
Yeah. And I just think it's important to reiterate that the...
It's a five-story.
It's a four-story.
Still a four-story?
Four-story.
Okay.
It was a five-story.
It was a five-story. And just to re, I just want to note that the parking garage isn't an open air. It's a, going to be an enclosed. So it has a nice architectural features to it, so it doesn't look like a concrete parking garage with headlights. It's going to be an enclosed and have some features to have it blend in as a building.
Enclosed all around or just that side?
All around.
Oh. Interesting. Okay.
So there's a lot, a lot of net benefits, particularly to the visualization and buffering on that end.
Okay. And all of the other things, building D, E, F, G, and the parking deck on the bottom are all the same as what we looked at before?
Yeah, those are consistent with what was in the previous one, and then as we came in for the Phase One site plan, that these all match that, that plan.
And those other site plans haven't been reviewed by us, and so those buildings could change as they come forward.
Right. But those, those will be, when we come in after the CUP for the site plan Phase One amendment, these same buildings will be included in that, in the middle.
When you come in to do the site plan for Phase One, which will be the apartments, the streetscape that you're building in the middle, where Building F is kind of sitting in the middle of it, is part of your infrastructure for Phase One, or is that?
It'll be built...
Built a bit at a time?
The landscape will be part of Phase One.
Okay. Excellent. Other comments or questions by members of the board? Nelson?
Could you show us, sort of outline Phase One there, just with your pointer, just so I get a feel for how much is included as Phase One?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty big majority of it. We'll have the roundabout, this main oval, and then the apartment building, the hotel and the office building, and this will be surface parking during Phase One.
Did you?
What?
The whole site will be developed. They'll just, this will be parking instead of the building and the parking garage.
So the only thing that's Phase Two is that office building and parking deck that's at the bottom of the site?
Right.
At the bottom part of the site. Okay.
Okay, I didn't realize.
Yeah. Yeah, that's more than I thought, too. I thought the apartment itself was Phase One and the other was part of the phase.
I hope that... We have, yeah, there's sub-phases to Phase One, so the construction phasing of it, but the intent is to go in with the Phase One of those buildings.
Other comments or questions by members of the board? Tom?
Just to clarify, these, the, the increase in the apartments, but the reduction in office and retail is just coming out of that Building A?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's...
So none of the other buildings changed at all?
No. And the, there's still the net same amount. They just were shifted to the, this building, this Phase Two building. So the 17,000 square feet of restaurant and retail that were on the first floor?
Oh.
Are now this first floor of this building. Are now this first floor of this building.
Yeah, the, the restaurant stays the same, but the retail and, and office went down a small amount, a couple thousand feet or something like that.
Based on, yeah, based on the Phase One, previous Phase One.
So, some of that's coming out of Building A, the rest of it's going into Building G?
Yep.
Thank you, Tom, for your question. Other comments or questions? Let's see if there's any members of the public who wish to weigh in and offer some advice. Open the floor for abutters and citizens. Dave, you want to let them have the tables so they could sit down while they're making their comments?
You won't bite? They know me, I won't bite.
Here's a pointer if you need it, as well as going to point, send it in.
Hi, I'm Nancy Harrington, 11 Spruce Street. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Monahan. He, in fact, already did put greenery in around for the abutting properties, and hopefully it will, we'll see if it makes it through the winter, but we just want to let him know that we appreciated that. He felt, he met with us, followed through his promise, and that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you for saying so.
The second thing is, I believe, or maybe ask a question, are there going to be balconies now on the apartments, or is it just windows?
We'll have to share that question with the applicant when he comes back up there, but it looks like those are.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're not here, okay.
Yeah.
You're an illusion, okay.
That's right, he's not there.
And the only, and the only other question, I just want to verify, at one point, there was a problem that was corrected, and that had to do with the dumpsters in the original plan, and I just don't see it reflected there. So, maybe it's still fine, but I don't want to make an assumption.
Okay, we'll ask them about that. I don't know where they.
And the roadway is, you're correct, that's the same, and it's very helpful and appreciated that you don't have to move the emergency. And it's an enclosed garage, it's great because that takes care of the noise and the headlight issues. So, really, it's just the dumpsters and just the question about balconies.
You get a shorter building, too.
And a shorter building, too, that's absolutely right.
I think the dumpster for that Building A, at least at one point in the discussions, was in that parking lot between the access road and the neighbors and.
Originally.
Yeah, and it may have gone away in the final plan of the earlier ones, but now the whole parking lot's gone away, so there's clearly a dumpster in it.
Well, right, I just wanted to know where it is now.
We'll get.
Because it had moved away, and I just wanted to verify that that was still true.
Get them to answer it. I think I know the answer, but we'll let them do it.
Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Council Harrington. Any questions by the members of the board? Thank you for your testimony.
I had a question.
Oh, it's Tom. The, the, not for Nancy, though, I'm sorry. Never mind. I'll wait till the applicant comes back. Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please come forward. We're your first.
I congratulate you on getting one of the.
Thank you, I went to the parade, it's pretty awesome.
Oh, wow.
It's a nice way to spend the day. It was a nice day today, too.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Barb Amaral, I'm at 1 Spruce Street. And I have to say, I'm actually really happy to have the garage there now and not the apartments, because that's right behind me. At one point, there was parking under the apartments. I'm guessing that all the parking was moved to the garage, but we have, would, like that question answered. And if there is parking under the apartments, is there going to be walls to prevent the light shining across to the abutters? I also had the question about balconies and have a concern about that and noise and due to potential noise of people being out on the balconies and added light. And also, prior, the apartments were not in the first sub-phase of Phase One, they were coming later, so I just wanted to clarify if that's still the case and where that would And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Barb. Any other abutters or citizens?
Richard Foot, 129 Indian Rock Road. I'm just curious, is there a general thing with all the apartments going in? Are these apartments, what's the question here, are, are any of these things workforce housing?
They're not presented by any of the applicants to be fitting within the definition of workforce housing, but I can tell you that they all do.
So, it's possible.
Yeah, so, the definition of workforce housing is based on the average housing cost in a community, which for us makes it something like $285,000 homes and below are workforce housing in Merrimack. And so, that's why I can say without sort of doing the math that these are not $285,000 homes.
Right.
They're all going to fit within the definition.
John Manuelli, Fire Marshal. Good evening, everyone. I just want to do a little clarification. Normally, I would have given you a written review on this, but I did not receive these plans until Friday of last week, and actually looked at them for the first time yesterday and was rather surprised at the difference from the previous set of site plans, in particular the, the change from three buildings to one very large building with a parking garage is a significant difference for us from a fire, firefighting standpoint. Looking at it quickly, I brought the chief in on it this morning, and we looked at it together, and we have issues with access to the building, especially from the wall facing Continental Boulevard. There's no access there for us at all, and that's a long run. The other issue which I just heard tonight is that we have a fully enclosed parking garage, which means that there's going to have to be a very significant carbon monoxide detection and evacuation system, as well as sprinkler system to, to cover fires and carbon monoxide issues in there. So, I haven't seen any of that yet, but it's something that I will be looking for, and I want to make sure that the developer is well aware of that from the very outset of this. So, there may be more comments regarding access as we do more measuring and such. So, I just wanted to make sure that was brought right up on this one.
Thank you for bringing it up, and I think we'll hear more from the applicant as site plan comes forward, but talking about the access along Continental Boulevard now at an early stage where you got to figure out where it will fit is an important question. Specifically, you need 18 feet of pavement?
Well, we need, we need to be able to access that wall of the building with a ladder truck, and right now, I believe if we are on Continental Boulevard, we're barely going to be able to touch, touch the building if we were straight out, never mind being able to go up to the fourth floor. So, that was one of our big concerns.
Okay. So, in order to be able to do that, they've got to provide you with some access roads along there.
We'd have to have an access closer, closer to the building, but not directly next to it.
And about the width of the pavement that you need is?
Typically, we shoot for 20 feet.
Okay.
To give us room to set up the truck.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Captain, not chief. Thank you.
Nice promotion there, bud.
Yeah. Okay, any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Then we'll close the public hearing and may invite the applicant back up to answer a couple of questions about things. Do you want to go through the questions as you took notes, or have me repeat them back to you, or?
Why don't you repeat them back to me in case mine's not in the same order?
I had a question about your dumpster locations.
Yeah, dumpster locations, as everyone noted, it was previously up here, it is now within the garage, and all the pickup is away from, it's between the, this parking garage and the apartment building, so it's on the south side of the, the site.
Okay. Are there balconies on the north side of the apartment building?
Yeah, it's the desire of the apartment to have balconies. But, whatever the board, Terry, you want to speak?
So, I have Terry Fields from.
I, I. Got to get the microphone so folks at home can hear you, and then.
Very good, thank you.
Sign in on that sheet and all that stuff.
Please, the board, my name is Terry Field, I'm a project manager for La Cessia Development, and we're the apartment developers that are working with us. And to answer the question specifically about the balconies, we would like to have balconies on that side. We try to create a lifestyle for our apartments that's as pleasant as possible for people, that feels as home-like, and a little bit of space, you know, five feet by 10 feet for a balcony is an area where they can get some fresh air and sit out. It's not an area that they can party on and make a lot of noise with that. We think we have far enough back with the buffers and with the landscaping that that would be possible, but we're at the pleasure of the board, and should there be a strong negative amount on that, on that side of the building, we would look to see what we could do to eliminate that. But, you know, in an ideal world, we would like to have some small balconies on that side.
My personal impression is that there isn't going to be an enormous amount of noise generated from balconies and things, having, it's been a while, but I used to live in apartments all the time, and occasionally people would get out there and, you know, spend a little bit of time, but it's not like five different balconies will have groups of people on it at the same time making noise.
Exactly, and that's what we find, and we, you know, we see typically the, the type of clientele that we reach, you know, just likes to have a couple of chairs out there and a place to sit out and enjoy the evening, you know, so.
Will you, one of the uses of balconies could potentially be people that want to go out there and smoke. Will you limit that in your rental buildings, or?
You know, I haven't talked to the management about this particular property. Typically, our properties are non-smoking properties completely, and, and, and we just, we, we find it best for all of the reasons to have non-smoking properties. Now, you know, each locality we have to look at to see if there's, you know, something that I don't know about, I can't say that for sure here, but that's typical for us.
Okay, excellent, thank you. How about allowing pets in your apartments? What's your kind of thought or approach to that? Because a dog left out on the balcony could bark all day and.
That's a good point, and we definitely have, we definitely are pet-friendly, and we like to have pets there, we think it's an important part of people's lives, and that's something that we would probably do here. However, we, we know that between people that live within the community and around the community that pets are something that's important to control. So, we typically have a code of conduct, we do as part of our lease, that's enforceable, you know, so that we can work with the, the client if there becomes a problem and have it right as part of their lease. Again, you know, we want good neighbors, we try to be good neighbors, and it's important, sometimes you have problems, and it's up to our leasing to really address that and go strongly after it. We certainly don't want to bother not only the neighbors, the abutters, but the other people within the facility itself.
Yeah, absolutely. And obviously, when it's really, really cold in the wintertime, anybody leaves their pet out there is going to have a visit from the police department.
Yeah, we'll be there first.
Yeah. In your code of conduct, have you considered and thought through where you expect the residents to walk their dog and, and pick up and do all of the right things that they're supposed to do?
We have been talking about that, and I'm not sure, I think we'll address that as part of site plan when we come forward with that, and I think we'll have by that time. It looks like we've got some areas on the Continental Boulevard side perhaps that we may be able to address that, but yes, that's definitely something we'll have planned, Dan.
Sure. It would certainly be helpful as a part of the site plan to have the code of conduct, as you've called it, require people to pick up after their dog, and I know that the other folks that were here were talking about the owners would have to have the dog's DNA on file so they could test the, the, the only reason for being this particularly careful about that is you're right, other side of Continental Boulevard is some of the other wells that we have in town that supply the water supply, and there's already monitoring wells on this site for dealing with other things that are being watched, and I don't want to create a situation where we're worried about what's going on with the dog.
Makes sense, we're learning as we go. Dog DNA is a new one to me in particular, but I'm learning all the time.
From what I understand, it's not crazy outrageous, unaffordable approach to these things?
Interesting, yeah, interesting.
That it's a manageable thing that, that more than a few apartment complexes are doing these days.
Sure.
Surprised me, I mean, they didn't do that when I lived in apartments, but maybe they should have. Other comments or questions? Oh, so dumpsters balcony, are you going to have parking under the apartment building or just in the garage?
No, at the current time, we were able to consolidate all of the parking to the garage.
Okay. Then, is the apartments the very, very first part of Phase One?
In terms of the overall site?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that.
I know it's in Phase One, but is it the beginning of Phase One?
You know, I'm not sure, Mr. Monahan, is that something?
Hi, Tom Monahan. Our plan is to deliver the hotel at the same time as the apartments are completed. So, at least the hotel. So, you know, down the road, some 18, 19, 20 months after, after construction, we plan on delivering. So, part of Phase One, it would be the hotel.
Okay.
But the apartments are the anchor of the first phase.
So, the, the big apartment building with the garage and then Building E is the hotel?
Yeah.
And then, okay, thank you for that. The other thing that I wrote down as a note is just understanding the, what the fire department had shared about the requirements for access around the back of the apartment building.
I think that's good feedback. I, I think with the site plan, that's probably an appropriate time that we can meet with the Fire Marshal at that time.
Figure out how to fit it in there.
Figure it in. Looks like, I think there's some opportunities along the, the building, back here where we could potentially get something in. So, it would be, you know, we could work that out as part of a sit-down with the fire department.
Okay. You're going to encounter the same thing with your Phase Two buildings, that Building G and the parking deck are going to have to have that access around the south and, and west part. That's all that I took notes on from comments from the public. Did anyone else hear other things, or did you have?
Well, you did say access to the, the Fire Marshal did mention COT and sprinklers.
Yes, within the building itself.
Yeah, within, within the parking garage.
Yeah, those won't, won't show up on a site plan, so that's just satisfying the fire department's concerns.
Yeah, but that's something that we'll have the architect with us at that meeting to discuss.
Sure, and it just, I haven't met John yet, but we do like to work very closely with our local fire departments. You know, we want a safe building and one that works for everybody, so it's important to us. So, you betcha, we have, we like to have a good relationship, so.
Beautiful. Thank you for, for mentioning that. Something that occurred to me to ask, other than what we, the feedback we got from the public, we've got a network of sidewalks that go kind of along Continental Boulevard, along Industrial Drive, kind of all along the outside of the parcel, and we were very clear last time that the expectation was that that's part of Phase One, and I just want to make sure we're repeating that today, that that's a necessary part of the early construction. And then also that those are private sidewalks that you guys are going to be responsible for maintaining.
Yeah, we'll have maintenance agreement.
I know that we also revised the site plan for the main parcel here to accommodate the roundabout. Is all of that staying the same from our recent approval?
Yeah, that's untouched, yeah.
Okay. So, although we, we did amend that as a part of this, now it's staying exactly where it is? Okay. Other comments or questions, Tom?
So, I just, I wanted to confirm or verify, the parking deck that you're putting in with these apartments, that's parking specifically for the apartments and not for the rest of the out, the facilities? And, and I presume people will probably park on the south side of that building, assuming there's an entrance in that area.
Yeah, and that's been included in the shared parking that you can accommodate.
But the parking deck is, is intended to be sufficient for the apartments?
I think it's probably one of the amenities that you have covered parking for your apartment.
We, we believe, you know, from our communities that we've built and stuff, that the parking is a really important part of people's life. They want to be able to come home, find a spot, have it convenient, and they'll, they'll go wherever is most convenient to them. If, like you said, if they live down on that side and they have easy access, that's where they'll go. But we want to make sure we have a good, solid amount of parking, which is why we redesigned redesigned and worked carefully with Pearl Con and with the owners to, to make sure that it fit there. So we feel comfortable with this and think it'll work well for the apartment residents.
Let me pick up on something that Tom said, though, because we've got a parking analysis that's based on shared parking, and it's swinging back and forth as need goes to retail and the daytime uses when the folks that live in the apartment building may be off at work. But that parking deck is really not going to swing back and forth. The flex is all going to come from somewhere else on the site because the retail, nobody's going to go park in that garage to go to the hotel or to the retail.
So that's how we analyze the parking, the shared parking is, there's peak, figured out the peak for the apartment and what the overflow would be into the shared parking, but at the same time, making sure that remaining units, or remaining uses are accommodated. Like, we almost did a sub-shared parking analysis to make sure what's remaining can accommodate all the other uses.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's an excellent point. The key thing that we looked at with this is to say that before, where the apartments were sharing the other parking on the site, by taking that and consolidating it to mostly the garage, that freed up the shared parking for the rest of the site, so it actually loosened things up for the site on an overall balance.
Yeah.
And that was our goal.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Just one quick question. Why, why, help me understand why you need more apartments?
The key thing we look at when we look at a site like this is our overall cost and being able to take the cost and distribute it among the number of units so that we can make the numbers come into line for us. When you look at the overall cost of the parking deck, the units that we're building, the amenities, and the cost of the land, we try to get it to, so we defray, and, and the more units we can get with that within reason and what fits the site, then the better the numbers work to be able to make it feasible to work with.
I mean, 192 apartments is a lot of apartments.
It is.
And then, you know, 224 is even obviously a lot more.
We, we typically like to look at projects that are around 250 to 500 apartments, depending on the location where we are. That's kind of our sweet spot for what we do, with around, you know, most around 250. So we kind of wanted to bring this up to see if it made sense to nudge it up a little bit so we can get it to our wheelhouse. We, we, we do things that are around 175, 180 when the, you know, when it's correct for the site, but with this parking garage and with the amenities that we have, we're very amenity-heavy. We like to have a really nice workout room and other amenities for folks to make it a community, and so we needed to bump those units up to kind of defray those costs out.
Are these 32 all singles, or are they a mixture?
It's a mixture. It came out, if I'm not mistaken, I think it came out 112, 112, 112, one bedroom, 112, two bedrooms is what it came out.
And is that, is that like, when you, when you look at the, the apartment building as a whole, is it like, the right side is all one, it's all like?
It, it's, it's spread out. It, it comes down to more, how do you fit those units within the spaces, the corners and all the different things?
Gotcha.
So they're, it's spread kind of homogeneously through the, through the building.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Dan, for the question. Other comments or questions?
Back on parking, your, your 800-space parking deck is, is going to be the majority of, or a large portion of the parking for the hotel, once you build Building G and fill up that chunk, which is a significant distance away. I guess there is, there is a lot of parking south of the building.
Yeah, actually, the, the parking in this area for the 124 rooms is about right for the hotel.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, so the applicant's asked us to grant a amendment to their previously approved site plan. It doesn't require acceptance because it's an amendment. We've had our public hearing, and so it's appropriate for the board to consider what to do.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we grant conditional final, conditional final approval to the application with the following conditions to be fulfilled, and these are itemized on the memo from Mr. Robert Price dated January 31st, 2019.
Second for Alastair's motion. Second by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dan's opposed. Any abstaining? So 5-1-0 to grant the conditional final approval for the amendment. And so the next thing we'll do is see you guys back for site plan on this? Do you know when you expect to come back?
We submitted, so we could be back in two weeks.
I think.
Although you've got to satisfy the fire department.
Scheduled on the 19th.
19th.
We have a very short turnaround to.
Make some access road for these guys. All right, so thank you guys for the presentation, good luck with the approvals, and we look forward to seeing you again with the site plan and taking up the rest of the consideration of that. That brings us to item six on our agenda, which is discussion of other items of concern. The only one that I have on my mind is that the co-chair and I signed a voluntary lot merger today, which doesn't require any board approval, but just to let you know that it was there, and we did that. It happened to be the consolidation of the lots for the Executive Park apartment building, but.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't quite hear you there.
A voluntary lot merger was submitted by a, a property owner in town, which requires the signature of planning board chair and co-chair, but it doesn't require any decision-making, it's, there's no choice to be made. It happens to have been the Executive Park Realty site that merged a couple of their lots, and so I know that's particularly interesting to folks.
Executive Park Realty, that's.
Exile Eleven, that big apartment building.
Behind the Woodlands.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone else have other items of concern? Tom?
I just wanted to mention that at our budget hearings, we did get approval for a $17,000 NHMA dues for this year. It's a special discounted rate that they gave us, a sort of a reintroducery rate, with the caveat that we're going to closely monitor and understand are we getting our value out of that, but it was put into the budget by the council, still needs to be approved by the citizens, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we didn't argue for and get that, with a lot of Nancy's help, by the way.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And thank you, Nancy, unless she's not here. Thank you for that update. So assuming that that budget gets approved, that becomes available, what, the beginning of July?
Yes.
Beginning of the year? So there are some conferences and some things, and I encourage you all to make use of the things that, that are the benefits of doing it.
The better if you want to keep.
And in fact, on that line, Mr. Chairman, we have all, I think, had a note saying that the spring OEC or OEP conference is on Saturday, July, June the 1st?
Yes, now that's not municipal association.
That is municipal, that's the OEP.
Yes. Everybody should have gotten that email. If you haven't been to one of those conferences before, they're excellent. I never get a chance to go because it hits something that I regularly do on whatever weekend that is. I think I teach a class at NHTI that first week, and it gets me every single time, but somehow I thought it was May, so maybe June's okay with me.
Now, I remember it was June for one very good reason, Mr. Chairman. It's my birthday.
Happy birthday in advance.
My anniversary.
Okay.